Okay, at this point of our meeting, we will be allocated to board members telling each other activities and meetings that we have attended over the last month. So, any interesting board members attended meetings, conventions, et cetera?
Yes, we attended the 2018 ACCT Legislative Summit. And the keynote speaker was the Secretary of Labor, Alexander Acosta. And he was on his soapbox because he indicated that we had six million unfulfilled jobs. That was, and if you look at it from a spin standpoint, he said the situation was six million jobs openings, high-tech job openings. He felt like the problem was there was a gap and a misunderstanding between what the colleges are producing and what industry wants. That was his number. And then as far as the implication, he was, you know, this is going to affect the US GDP by 2020. And then the need, and I felt pretty comfortable when he started talking about what was going to be needed to fill these jobs. The first thing he says, you have to increase your apprenticeship. And we've got rebuild Houston. Second thing he said was, you know, making sure that we understand what industry is looking for, and Dr. Head is already a step ahead on that one. The third one was, hey, we've got to have more STEM students, you know? And then the fourth one was, we have to rethink our immigration policy. And without the immigrants, we will not be able to fill all these jobs. So, just, and he was very passionate about it. And I think, I agree with him. I think this is going to have a major impact on our GDP if we don't turn this thing around.
Thanks, Ken. Dr. Holden, did you have something? I mean, you had, you kind of looked like you did.
You can tell by looking?
I'm not calling you out, though.
From the sublime to the ridiculous. No, wow. I just didn't know if anybody had mentioned, let's see, how am I going to do this? All those people in the room that ran the Houston Marathon here lately raised their hand.
Oh, I drove it.
Yes. I've done that before. Quite an accomplishment, doctor. Good job. Oh, excuse me. Miriam ran the half? I'm impressed.
Three years ago. I don't think I can do that anymore, though.
It's an accomplishment. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All too tired.
Yes. Go ahead.
About two weeks ago, I was asked to speak at a orientation program for state legislators. I couldn't turn that down. But I want to say, I was very nice the whole time I was there and didn't say what it is that I really wanted to tell those people. And I began by saying very nicely, why would any student want to go to the University of Texas when they could go to Lone Star College? And I said, if you go to the University of Texas, and you take freshman English, your instructor will be a graduate student who's about two years older than you are. And here at Lone Star, it will be a seasoned person, probably with a master's degree, only not a PhD, but a seasoned professor. A student, not a student. At UT, you will pay $1,000 for that class, and here you will pay about $200. Now, the reason I started to mention this stuff is on the panel where I spoke was Senator Schwarzenegger. And he's a very powerful senator. And I wanted him to hear this stuff. I also had some conversations on this with Senator Creighton, and who's our senator in this district. One of the things I pointed out is, and this is research from the American Enterprise Institution, is that the average subsidy per student per year at the elite schools is $13,000. The average subsidy per year per student at community colleges is $1,000 or $2,000. The disparity is enormous. And I wanted the senators to know that. I wanted them to choke on it. But I didn't say anything bad. I also pointed out that schools that get a $13,000 subsidy for students, schools such as UT, has an endowment of $26.5 billion. Texas A&amp;M has an endowment of $11.5 billion. Those two schools are the richest public schools in the world. And yet, every year, they're saying, we need to have a tuition increase. Well, they'd like to have it, but they don't need to have it. And I also said to the senator who was there, this puts you in a very difficult position because if you respond to the disparity of $13,000 as against $1,000, you're not necessarily going to please UT and A&amp;M. And I said, that is very risky for any political figure. And the reason it's risky is those two universities have enormous, enormous publicity machines, alumni, friends, donors. And if you cross them, they will see to it that you are not re-elected. And he confessed that. They are, it's too risky for us to give those schools a hard time. So you still have that disparity. It is enormous. It is only growing wider. And all we can do here is to point out all the good things that we do and that hope that that information gets to people in Austin. So that was the function of my visit. And afterwards, Schwarzenegger and I talked. He was very complimentary. There were some other legislators in the audience then. They were all very complimentary about the data that had come forward. Now, I don't know if anything's going to happen with it, but at least the seed was planted. I want to finish with just one more comment. And I promise I am not going to say anything again until next month.
Thirty seconds.
I have been talking with Rusty Harden, the very famous attorney who defended Roger Clemens and movie stars, people like that. He will be challenging the constitutionality of the Texas Open Meetings Act. And he will do it before the Court of Criminal Appeals. I talked to him, gave him my own views about the Texas Open Meeting Act, and he said, geez, I want you for a witness. I don't know if I'll testify. I don't know if he'll ask me then. But if he does, I will testify against the flaws of the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, doc. Any other board members? If not, I don't remember what day it was, Quentin, but Ken and I attended a leadership conference called Excellence in Action over at Noah Harris. But it represented students throughout the entire system. And basically, you know, what happened was, at least the part that I participated on, students talked about things that had been done to help them be successful in college. And there were, there was a, there were five or six breakout sessions that students had an opportunity to attend. It was very impressive, very motivating. And I wish to congratulate Quentin and his team on putting that program together and giving those students an opportunity to tell, you know, their story. Because there are some good things. There were folks there talking about the low grade point average, you know, that they had incurred due to lack of motivation and how they have persisted, you know, since then and pull their grade point averages up because of this program. So I think that's a great return on Lone Star's, our Lone Star's investment. And our, and like Dr. Head said earlier about the international students, I think these students, too, will do the same type of PR work for Lone Star and let the community know that Lone Star is there not only for those that are blessed academically, you know, but those that are on the other rung and how Lone Star can pull those individuals up to be productive citizens. So, thank you, Quentin and your team for, you know, putting that program on and watching that program grow and hope it continues. Secondly, and I guess I'm getting so old I can't remember dates, but at a university, we established a new partnership with Stephen F. Austin and Dr. Alicia, you know, kind of headed that up. And we now have a bachelor's program that's being offered by Stephen F. Austin in sports, business, or business sports?
Business sports.
Business sports, and et cetera. And there was a huge delegation from Stephen F. Austin that came down along with three, three of their board members. And we had a great celebration. The president spoke very highly of past experiences, you know, with Lone Star and how he and his staff is looking for ways to fill that building up to the extent we may have to build a new one. So, so, like Dr. Frogrich said, you know, Lone Star does a good job, and we're doing a good job of lobbying or telling the public about our work. So I really enjoyed that. And there was something else that I was going to say, I forgot. Growing old is hectic, but that's enough. Anything else?
You're a youngster.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the compliment coming from an eighty, nothing.
I think, what are you, seventy-two?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm eighty.
Well, I didn't want to say that, but, okay. Okay, if no other, no other board members with the report? Approximately, and my numbers might be off again, about four years ago, when Trustee Good became chairperson, she advocated that the board establish an endowed scholarship. And we asked her to bring the board up to date on where we are with that endowment. And also, Sal Devare was, is the only member here that was not on the board at the time. And it's a good opportunity for Sal Devare to learn about this endowed trustee scholarship. So, Trustee Good, would you proceed?
Sure. Actually, it was April of 2016. And at that time, the endowment was first created. I talked about it early in my tenure as board chair and suggested that we should lead by example, that if we're going to ask the employees to contribute to the foundation, then we should do so as well. So I would just like to review a few things. You've heard this all before, but, you know, the average person needs to hear something seven times before it sticks, so what the heck, right? To create an endowed scholarship, which will provide scholarships for students every year supposedly in perpetuity, requires $15,000. I don't know about you, but I don't happen to carry that in my pocket. You know, it's a little hard to write that check. So when you express interest in creating such an endowment, the foundation gives that effort seven years. Seven years to bring that account up to $15,000. At the time that I suggested it, I did the math based on who was on the board at the time and how much time was left in their tenure, and even told them how much per month it would take for all nine board members to share equally in creating this endowment. Well, I am happy to report that not quite two years after it was created, we have hit the 56% mark in two out of seven years. A total of five trustees have either contributed or pledged just over $8,400. I should note that one of those trustees is also funding or has funded another separate endowment. And no, I don't know who that is because it wouldn't be appropriate for me to ask for names. So I don't know who the five are or who has this other endowment. But I do know this. There are three people here tonight who have nine months left in their tenure on this And we know that they won't be remaining after November because their districts where they live are not on the ballot. There are three more people on the board who have 33 months left in their current terms. And there are three who have 57 months left. So for those of you who only have nine months left, if you haven't yet contributed, you will need to pledge $185 a month for the next nine months. For those of you who have 33 months left, it will take you $51 a month for 33 months to fulfill that. And those of us who still have 57 months to go, hey, come on, guys, $30 a month, really? Come on, that's what, McDonald's and two trips to Starbucks? And I'm happy to say that for the four people, I don't know who you are, who haven't pledged yet, I even brought pledge forms with me. And the foundation takes cash, check, and credit cards. That's my report.
Thank you. Helen, do we have any board members, not board members, but citizens wishing to speak to us? Just have one? Thank you.
John, John. Next time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. Some two years ago, a team of 115 faculty and staff representatives from across Lone Star College meant to identify cultural beliefs all college employees could embrace that would move us towards the results we collectively desired to achieve. I was privileged to be one of those 115 employees. The six cultural beliefs, which became the foundation of LSC 2020, of the LSC 2020 initiative, were not intended to be just slogans, but were meant to be aspirational goals for the college to grow into. As such, they are worthy of a renewed commitment. One of the cultural beliefs of LSC 2020 is better together. This belief asserts that as college employees, we should share knowledge and encourage collaboration to reach common goals. Better together is a phrase that reverberates well with union folk. From the earliest days of labor unions over 100 years ago, workers in all manners of endeavors have understood the value of joining hands with one another to promote the professionalism of their craft and the dignity of their work. The modern labor movement did not arise with the blessing of management. Early unions did not enjoy the recognition and support of government. However, over time, enlightened leaders in both industry and government recognized that listening to the voice of workers truly made everyone better together. Ronald Reagan, when he was campaigning for the presidency in 1980, said, quote, "Where free unions and collective bargaining are forbidden, freedom is lost," unquote. Here at Lone Star College, our local of the AFT was founded in the 1980s without the blessing of college administration. We do not have, nor do we claim, the right to collective bargaining or the right to strike because the government of Texas does not agree with Ronald Reagan on these points. To quote our local president, Alan Hall, quote, "Members join because they believe that employees should be treated with dignity and respect, that employees should help each other, that employees should have a voice in their professional lives, that employees deserve fair pay and good working conditions, and that the district needs a system providing checks and balances," unquote. Currently, the membership role of AFT Lone Star College numbers approximately 500. Our members are faculty and staff and some administrators, full-time employees and part-time employees. All have joined voluntarily. All voluntarily pay monthly dues because we believe that we are truly better together. Over the years, we have grown even though, even through times when college administration has strived to marginalize us. But we have also enjoyed times when administrators from deans to chancellors have realized that working with us, we can solve problems together, whether those are individual personnel issues, fixing policy flaws, or helping the community around us to understand why investing in the college is a good thing. In the past, we have worked effectively with the current chancellor and the college presidents. That collaboration has been lost sadly and has been replaced by conflict that has been costly, both in financial and human terms. Tonight, speaking on behalf of the executive board and the members of the AFT, I propose a reboot. Laying aside the events of the last year or so, I invite the chancellor to meet with the leadership of our local in open conversation about issues that matter to us all. I invite the college presidents to meet with the AFT executive board members on your campuses. We offer a unique perspective that crosses all categories of employees. We focus on a broad array of issues. We have access to resources from our state and national affiliates that can help us find solutions to problems we have all struggled with for a long time, like finally coming to a consensus on grievances in a way that protects employees, supports the needs of our college, and preserves the oversight of the board of trustees. Yes, we believe that we can be and that we are better together and that the time is ripe to reinvigorate that premise. Thank you so much for your kind consideration.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now at consideration of the consent agenda. There are 11 items on the consent agenda we will pull. Item seven has been pulled. Are there any other items that you would like to have?
One and two.
Twenty-two. Considered separate. Two, one and two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And 11.
11, all right. Items one and two, 11 will be considered separately. Item seven, remember, has been pulled. At this point, I'd like to have a motion for items three through six, eight, nine, and 10.
Slow move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt items three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Okay, Kyle, you're on.
Yeah, I had a question regarding the general fund stipulations, Jennifer. On, yeah, the first.
Item one, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Oh, wait, you need to move second discussion.
I'm sorry. We need a motion and a second on item one.
So.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. We will hear Kyle's questions answered by Jennifer.
Sure. Is that last sentence of 3C24A under general fund? It says, the maximum stay maturity for any one investment is three years. And then when I look at our portfolio breakdown, we have municipal bonds and other bonds. Are all those set to expire within that time, or is this relating to something else?
I will go back and double-check, but as far as I am aware, we are in compliance with our policies.
Okay. So we said we don't hold any, like, 10, 20-year notes or anything like that? Okay.
Right, Tammy's nodding in agreement, right? Yeah, okay.
All right, thanks. That was it.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we will vote on consent agenda item one. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Need a motion for item two, motion second to consider item two.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly second that we consider item two. Questions?
So, this is a pretty old tale I've been telling, or at least asking about for five years, so I might as well keep asking about for the next five months, which is related to student fees. Now, it's all included within the same, the outstate and international students, but we're still talking about differential fees here, which then relates to our in-district students. What I've been asking for is not just some sort of regulation over spending, which is, I do think our expenditures should be linked somehow to CPI so that we don't outgrow the rest of the economy in the same way healthcare and military expenditures do, or at least the cost of those. Likewise, I've been asking for a sort of a revenue system in which we have three primary sources of revenue. State funds, local taxes, and student fees. The only one, now, we don't control the state funds. We can do a great job sort of lobbying to try to keep those up, which we have. But then that leaves us in exclusive control over property taxes and student fees. Since I've been here, we've never voted to increase property taxes, but we've consistently voted to increase student fees. And I find that problematic. So I wanted us to decide as a board to how much of a slice of the pie should property holders be responsible for, and how much students, and then allow those to self-adjust and each party pay what we would consider to be their fair share. And since we haven't done that, I can't vote to increase student fees.
So, just to address that issue, the topic at the retreat this year is primarily the budget and kind of where we are and exactly what you're talking about. We initially had this scheduled back in, we postponed the board retreat because of, we couldn't, we couldn't get everybody. So we wanted to talk about this earlier. We have to, the tuition schedule, for us to get this on the tuition schedule, to get it posted, we have to come in March every time, by March, to get it on the fall schedule. So that's why we're pushing on this right now. But the plan originally was to meet earlier. We would normally have a retreat earlier so we could talk about all these. But in the retreat, we have, the topic is, how much should taxpayers pay? What would students pay? And knowing what the state's doing. So that is the.
Thank you.
Okay.
And if I were to comment?
We agree with you. We need some guidance because it will determine what we, how we move forward in the future. And what we're planning on doing at the retreat is showing you over a five-year period, knowing what we know about the state and the way we see assessed value with that slowing down, knowing generally what our expenses are going to be, how do we want to handle this in the future?
If we, oh, I'm so sorry, really. If we adopt this, no, let me ask it a different way. If we don't adopt this, how much is the hit to the budget for next year?
So for the out-of-district and out-of-state fees, the estimated impact of that fee increase is 3.2 million, and then the estimated impact for the differential fees is 1.9 million.
But we approved, or you all agreed last year, to move the out-of-district and out-of-the-international fee up so that we could, it's what is stated in the proposal to equalize, to make sure that taxpayers were not subsidizing out-of-district and international.
Last March and at. Last March and at the budget workshop last June, we talked through how out-of-district and out-of-state was being subsidized by in-district students and property taxpayers, and we talked through a three-year plan to.
To move that up. So, John, the speaker's not, the speaker's not working from here.
Can you hear me better? I just need to get closer.
So what you're basically saying, though, the proposed increase will reduce the amount that the taxpayers are paying for those individuals that are outside of the district.
Yes, so taxpayers are subsidizing the out-of-district students and taxpayers and state funds combined are subsidizing the out-of, the international students, the out-of-state.
So it's costing more for the in-district folks to go to school if you include property tax than it does folks that are out of the.
Which, I fully agree, and I voted for the increase in fees for outstate and international, but this is lumped in with our in-district students, the differential fees.
Well, the challenge we're having is the state is not increasing our funding, it's pretty well holding steady. That's the challenge that we're having with the, with the cost every year. I mean, it's the same issue with the school districts, it's the same. So they're pushing the cost on down to us, that's what we're trying to, I mean, that, again, that's going to be the topic at the board meeting over, how do we want to handle this? I mean, we've only got, if the state is reducing their appropriations down from twenty-two to twenty-one, or it is, that's the way it's looking, twenty-one percent of our money will come from the state and that amount will be dropping because they're not decreasing the amount, but they're just not increasing it. So it's pretty holding steady, so they're pushing those costs on down to us.
Listening to everything, though, that Kyle has to say, I think it's perhaps unfortunate, though I see the efficiency of putting all three of these proposals in one item, kind of forcing us to either take the whole package or deny the whole package. And his concern is over the differential fees to our in-district students. I was kind of taken aback to see that we last approved an increase for international students three months ago.
That was discussed, so for this current fiscal year, we did it in two steps. First, we did a five-dollar increase at the fall semester and then a subsequent ten-dollar increase for the spring semester. So that timing was last March for the fall and then this past September for the spring semesters. And that was part of this three-year plan that was discussed at the June workshop last year to close this gap. So it was a fifteen-dollar total increase in this current fiscal year, just split over the fall and spring semesters. I did also want to comment that in terms of the split between taxes and tuition and fees, even though we haven't raised taxes, with still the actual amount raised increasing, while it hasn't been formulaic, I think every year at the budget workshop, we have always discussed that so far, we've at least, rule of thumb, kept it about equal, roughly speaking, of what's coming in from taxes and students. It's been each around between thirty-two and thirty-five percent coming from both sources.
Any other comments?
Yeah, who's all lobbyists?
Dr. Head and Dr. Trobry.
I don't.
Okay.
I didn't bring the book because I didn't know we were going to get into this, but Raymond Paretti's is president of, what?
One eighty.
One eighty. Yeah, Steve, yeah. They have a booklet they put out every year citing tuition at all community colleges in the country, well, not all community, at all states in the country. And again, if I'd known this, I'd have brought the book, I could give you the exact figure. But tuition in the, in this state for community college kids is roughly, to round it off, about two thousand a year. The other forty-eight states have tuition for community college kids that averages about three thousand dollars a year. There is only one state that has cheaper tuition than Texas, and that is California. But we're, this state has, is the second cheapest state for tuition and fees to go to a community college. That may not be a strong argument, but relative to what the rest of the world does, this school is relatively cheap.
I think even with these proposed, we're in the bottom third, I think, in tuition. One of the things we're going to talk about at the retreat was, where do we think we want to be? If we want to be at the fifty percentile, then that would be a raise in tuition if we want to get right in the middle of the state. But we're, I don't have it off the top of my head, it's in the report that we prepared for you, for the board, though, where we stand with everybody else. But I know we're in the bottom third for tuition costs. Lone Star historically is in the bottom for taxes and in the bottom for, toward the bottom in tuition. Still a good bargain, I think.
Yeah, and most, actually, yeah, most of these differential fees still don't total what we have as the cost for each of these disciplines, and we've capped the increase in any given year, this year we've capped it at the two dollars. So there's still a significant gap between what we can show as the cost of these disciplines and what these differential fees.
Well, the other thing I'd tell the board, two things. One is, for two dollars an hour, the average is nine, about nine hours that students would take. So we're talking about an eighteen-dollar increase here for the average student. Also, financial aid will cover, the amount of financial aid you receive increases with the cost of education here. So if you're in that group that receives financial aid, it's covered with the financial aid with the tuition, so.
Okay, any other unreadiness? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eight, one, adopted. Item eleven, Dr. Holes, motion for item, motion and second for item eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly second that we consider item eleven. Any unreadiness? Dr. Holes.
Are you excited? We're almost done. Two things. Well, can I put two topics in this, or do I have to just speak to item eleven?
Just want to speak on the topic.
Okay, great. So, this, this item is about the board approving contracts. And normally, I would say, board members operate at the thirty thousand foot level. In other words, we don't sit there and review credentials. We just take the word of the people that are suggesting we approve them, that we approve them. And that's kind of what happens. And in this case, I looked at, actually, I knew it was going to be on here. There's a contract that is offered to us for a teacher at Montgomery, Dr. Riley. And this teacher is a friend of mine. He's a Rice graduate, chemical engineer, masters, oil and gas. And as far back as I can remember, he did tutoring in the high schools, and then he got an adjunct position a few years ago. And I kept saying, "Don't you want to work full-time? Don't you want to work full-time? Don't you want..." And he had a bunch of things going on in his life, but he got to a place where they offered him a job. And whoever offered him that job, I got to say, way to go, because you have, if I had a kid and he was going to take chemistry, I would want Rod Chilken to teach him. Because I know I'd have somebody who would get right down there and make certain that they got it and they succeeded, and he would do, he does whatever it takes. And he's just an incredible guy to know. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I mean, the guy, and it's, and it's, and if you were to ask him if that was a big deal, he'd, no, he was just doing what needed to be done. And I, I have goosebumps. I mean, and, and really, the reason I brought this up is because I have met so many instructors, teachers, educators, in this system that just knocked me out with their commitment and willingness and dedication. And I mean, it's over and over and over and over. And so if you're a guy at the thirty thousand foot level who pretty much is policy and the tax rate, gosh, I mean, you all do a great job. Incredible job. Thank you so much.
Dave. May I say something? He's just been a chemical engineer.
Oh, oh, my God.
Pardon me? Okay, all the chemical engineers in the room, stand up. Okay, yeah, here we go, okay, I got it, I got it.
Anything else?
No.
Any other comments? Oh. I sure will. What, it's on the same subject?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially because the comment was made in the motion itself and in the discussion, the action item.
Speaking to the mic, please.
The, I just want to make one point of clarification. The action item requests the authority to allow the chancellor to potentially execute contracts. It does not approve contracts. And I just want to be very clear about that because we've had legal issues about that in the past. Just want to make sure that everyone's voting on the exact same thing, and someone doesn't cite this and then lawsuit.
Got you. You know, that's why we're glad we have you, make sure they won't have any complications later on.
Amen.
Especially after he leaves the board in November.
Dr. Head, if you would like to know where Dr. Holesy stands on this.
No.
So lawyers are worth every penny they make, so, okay. All those in favor of item eleven, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Attorney Castilio, we have one policy that's up for first reading, and I'm going to ask the board members, I don't know, any of y'all have, I know you read that, but do you have any questions about the, the item that's up for the first reading? And you don't have to, I'm just going to want to make sure, because I want to get Mario to explain any questions or concerns you have on first readings. That's item twelve. Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the financial report.
Come on down, Jennifer.
Okay, going to make sure I talk right into the microphone. So in the financial report, is the, our financial statements ending January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. I'm going to jump right to page three to walk you through our forecasted variance because there are several things going on here in this page. First, I will note that we are forecasting total revenues to be down by, in a total of twelve point two million. But I do want to just walk through what that comprises of. I will note one item for about two million is for, is a student debt write-off that we are looking at doing. I mentioned this first only because this is a non-cash transaction, this is a balance sheet item. So if you even look down towards the bottom, where we are then forecasting what our ending cash reserves is, you see where I do, we basically back that out, so it is not impacting our cash. So you see that one point nine million towards the bottom. So I want to mention, that is part of the twelve million, but really, cash-wise, it's about ten million dollar forecast variance because that item is a non-cash. So other items included in there, included in there is the about three million dollar forecasted impact of the spring enrollments. And then that is offset by budget reductions that we talked about last month, that is shown in reductions under expenditures. A couple other items is just, we are forecasted to be down in non-credit revenues by about a million and then tax revenues by about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are showing revenues, like I said, as the total of the twelve point two, but about ten million of that is more cash related items. And then you see the, also, almost five million dollars in reductions total under expenditures. So right now, we are forecasting ending the fiscal year at fifteen point four percent. So we do hope to keep watching this very closely in the coming months as we walk closer towards the end of the fiscal year because I know the goal was to end the fiscal year at sixteen percent. So we hope to find ways to make up, it's about two point two million short to reach the sixteen percent by the end of the fiscal year.
Just for clarification, on page one on the chart, so actual revenues as a percent of the budget this year were at sixty-eight four. Previously, we were at seventy-one three, so we're running about three percent less than what we were through the first half of the year.
Yes, but one of the things, if you remember last year with the seventy-one percent, remember, there was about a, we knew sort of at the beginning of the year that property tax revenues were going to come in about seven million above what had been budgeted for. So because, because that piece hadn't been budgeted, pretty much throughout the entire fiscal year, we ran high. So that's why I would actually point you to the prior two fiscal years, sixty-seven point two, sixty-seven point six. Those might be better example years than last year.
Wait, can you briefly address the, kind of where we are with the tuition shortfall because of the hurricane? And how that translates to the end of the year? So, so we've asked the colleges to give back three point one.
Not just the colleges, the vice chancellors as well, so system office.
Yeah, sorry. The vice chancellor thought they hit the jackpot. So the presidents and the vice chancellors, we asked everybody to make cuts so we could make those, make those decisions right now without having to wait because if enrollments are off during the summer again, and I just don't think they will be, but if they are, we don't want to, the number just grows larger if we don't take that action right now. So we can deal with that now, and it'll be last year in the summer if it occurs, and I don't think that's going to occur. But normally, we would be spending ninety-seven, eighty-eight percent of our operating budget anyway, just through normal expenditures. I guess my point is, I still, we're fine, the way we're looking at things, we're fine, we're still projecting even with all that that we're, will end up increasing the reserves. The presidents and the vice chancellors have been helpful. I mean, it is what it is because of the hurricane, and so we don't have all the expenses that we had before. And just for clarification purposes, we're spending hurricane recovery money out of Fund Thirty-Five, and we're using, explain how that's working, why you're here.
Yeah, okay, so that is sort of where I wanted to go next anyway. If you want to go to page five, is where I have the financials for Fund Thirty-Five. So the way Fund Thirty-Five works, it is operating as a grant reimbursement type fund. So this is where we are capturing all of our Hurricane Harvey-related expenses. If you look towards the very right-hand side of total expenditures, you can see in this fund, we've, to date, spent a total of nine point three million as of January thirty-first. We've spent nine point three million out of this fund. Now, how we are paying for this fund first is insurance proceeds. So ten million dollars has already gotten deposited into Fund Thirty-Five. So if you go to page six, the balance sheet for this fund, you can see toward the top, cash and cash equivalents, there is one point two million still remaining in this fund as of January thirty-first. So that's the insurance proceeds. Once we do go through that, as a grant-type fund, this fund can go negative. Effectively, what that means is Lone Star College does have its cash pool. This is all of the operating funds. And so if you go to the, our total balance sheet, we have in total right now about three hundred and seventy-five million dollars.
I'm sure everybody on the board heard that. We have three hundred and seventy-five million right now that we're drawing from right now, so.
So this is typical how most reimbursement-type grant, grants work. We, on a temporary basis, borrow from ourselves, and when the grant money comes back in, because most grants do work on a reimbursement basis. So that reimbursement money gets deposited, in this case, it would be back into thirty, Fund Thirty-Five to reimburse those expenses. So that's where, after insurance, the next place we're going to go to is FEMA money, that's reimbursement money. So that would go into Fund Thirty-Five. And then after that is when we will then have to look to our bond funds and then our reserve funds to then reimburse the balance of Fund Thirty-Five.
So I don't, we do not anticipate going into reserves. We think between insurance, FEMA. We think between insurance, FEMA, the question is the timing on this. So Kingwood will open in January of 19. We know that. So the question is whether FEMA is going to reimburse us by then. Is that accurate?
It's accurate and even.
How much they're going to reimburse us.
At le, I want to at least have a better idea of how much we think they're going to reimburse us by. Even if we haven't necessarily gotten that cash yet, if I have a better idea, then we can do the subsequent reimbursements from primarily bond funds for any capital items. There will need to be probably at least some small amount from the operating reserves for non-capital expenditures that are in Fund 35.
So we're thinking a lot about this. I think we, we know what we want to do, we just wait as to the timing on it and how much money we get from each source. So we're spending a lot of time on this.
So we haven't gone refunded, we haven't gotten any money from FEMA yet.
Do you hear the, we haven't received any money from FEMA? The answer is no, but go ahead.
No.
I, I don't, you want to tell them when we're expecting that?
No. Has our claim been approved? Or are we appealing or?
It's a whole process. I have my update here. So I think where I left the update here last month was FEMA had completed their site visits at Cyfair University Park and three out of the six buildings for Kingwood. They have now, on February 5th, completed the site visits at North Harris. And then the remaining three buildings, February 12th through 14th at Kingwood. So all site visits have been completed. February 21st, we also did some soil testing at Kingwood. March 1st, actually FEMA did, had during their site visit noticed some structural concerns with the parking garage there. So we are, are getting some additional analysis done on that parking garage. So there, and then we still, we have filed so far with FEMA the first project worksheet for $9.6 million. That is still being reviewed by FEMA. And then internally, we are still working on all of the documentation because there, when we submit a project worksheet, there is a lot of documentation that has to go with it. And so, and we also really have to be able to show up expenses. So some of this is waiting till we know what these costs are. So the second project worksheet right now is totaling about 11.7 million, has not been submitted yet. But we are pulling together all that documentation to submit it. And this will be out of a total of the damage inventory was at 34 million. So at the end of the day, we have to submit project worksheets for the total 34 million. But it is a reimbursement program, so you've heard that we've only actually spent 9.6 million so far. So that's part of this, is we have to spend it first. We have to have the documentation of the invoices, of the contracts, what we did to submit. So, no, I'm not going to put a date on it.
I mean, the good news on this is we're, we're in excellent shape financially, so we can handle whatever's coming down. It just, it's just going to take us a while. Jennifer told me today that Houston is still seeking reimbursement from Hurricane Ike.
I can't say if they are right now. I remember when I, still there they were.
When I was in New Orleans recently, they're still waiting on money from Hurricanes Katrina.
Yes.
Like, 40 million, so. So we'll handle our business. We need, we know we need to get Kingwood open, Catherine, just so that we're clear. We know we need to get Kingwood open for the students' sake, so.
And if we, if it's topic appropriate, update on Kingwood project?
Yeah, you can tell them what's, what's going on there.
So there, there are several items, all just approved tonight, which is great. We extended the increase, the authorized spend amount on the contract with the architects for Kingwood that's doing the design for the build-back. Also was approved was the construction manager and the pre-construction services. So now that construction manager can begin working with the architects to finalize the construction documents. So as soon as that is complete, I have to come back to the board here again to ask you to approve the guaranteed maximum price of the construction. Our, the goal is to have that construction begin this summer, early summer, to have everything open. The buildings open January of 19. In the meantime, at the same time, we are also working on some of the temporary classroom options. So, for example, we are looking to occupy the second floor of the library, by early June. And then there will also be some of the modular classrooms by early July. Update there.
Anything else?
That concludes my report.
Do you have, you don't have a building to round for, right?
It's, it's in your.
Oh, it's in the program.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any future agenda items, board members?
Comment?
Dr. Holes, you have, you have a comment?
One comment.
Okay.
If I could make a recommendation, of course, I know you all are hip-deep in education. There's a book by Senator Ben Sasse. Has anybody read that book? The Vanishing Amer, The Vanishing American Adult. I've read it twice now and then listened one time in audiobooks. And so if you read it, send me an email what you think about what he says. Normally, being a sitting U.S. senator, I'd disqualify him as an author as far as I'm concerned. But he's also a former college president, and so the book is a head snapper. And you already know a bunch of things he's talking about. I'd be interested, I'd be interested in your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned.